And you leave us an invitation. And when she completes that, would you remain standing, join me in the class?
Could we just have a moment of silence for our friend, Mr. Rock Doctor?
Amen. Father, we come this evening in the holy name of Jesus. We want to say thank you, Lord, for this another day. Thank you for new mercies today, and your guidance, and your angels that watched out over us all day and all night. We say thank you for that. We thank you for the rain that you let fall on this earth that you created. We thank you for all of your blessing. We thank you, Holy Spirit, for your presence here tonight. We ask that you help us to do what is right. Help us to do it right because it's right. We thank you for all that you do, and help us to never know when when you aren't real to us. In Jesus' name we pray, and the believers say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and without any visible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve the agenda. Have motion to approve the agenda, opposed. Have motion, have second?
I'll second.
Have motion, second. Any question?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any need for us to revise what was originally sent out compared to... Because I believe the original agenda didn't have the police cars on it, did it?
It does on there.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Here none on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Next order of business will be the approval of amendments corrected regularly medium of September the 11th, and the regular minutes of January the 8th, 2018. Have motion to accept the amendment. It's approved. Have a second?
Yeah.
Have motion and a second? Have any questions? Here none on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Okay, new business. Resolution 2018 dash one regarding fireworks support by GMA.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We got this resolution, which would be number 2018 oh one, from the Georgia Municipal Association, and it came with an email that basically stated that GMA is in support of this. However, there has been other legislation introduced that would allow more than 70 days wherein fireworks can be detonated until midnight. And neither nor knowing ordinances nor any other restriction can be placed on the usage of fireworks on those days. That made the bill that passed the Senate Public Safety Committee to be unacceptable to GMA, and in fact, it was tabled on the Senate floor. Thereafter, GMA asked to have an amendment to bring the language back to the original version of the bill that passed the House. And this resolution urging the legislature to give more local control is what GMA supports. They would like to ask that we consider passing it so that there is a showing of support from GMA.
Okay. Have motion to...
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt that resolution, 2018 oh one.
So moved.
Okay, have motion, have second?
I'll second.
Have motion, second. Have any questions? Here none on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Next will be appointed the community action for improvement board of trustees.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've got a letter from the President of the Board of Trustees asking us to appoint someone to represent the city of Grantville on the Board of Trustees. Ms. D. Berry has represented the city since 2010, currently their Assistant Secretary and a very active member. For your consideration, we ask that you either reappoint Mrs. Berry to represent the city of Grantville for another year, or another representative.
Okay, does that require council action, or is that one of just appointed?
It requires council action, sir.
You have a request, with the action of a council.
I make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that we reappoint Mrs. Berry to the community action for improvement.
Have motion, have second?
I'll second.
Have motion and a second to reappoint Ms. D. Berry. We have any questions or discussion? Here none on the favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Next is approval to set qualifying fees for city council at $72 for the upcoming election in 2018.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The city clerk got this request from the supervisor of elections that we set the qualification, pardon me, the qualifying fees for city council members, and also the next will be setting the qualifying fee for mayor. But these requests came from the supervisor of elections.
Okay, that, well, have motion set the fee for qualifying for city council, $72 for the upcoming election.
So moved.
I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Do we have any discussion? Here none on the favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Next item on the agenda is to approval of setting qualifying fees for the mayor at $108 for the upcoming election in 2018. Same thing, with the will of council.
We to approve the qualifying fee for mayor at $208.
Okay, have motion, have a second?
Second.
Have motion and a second to set the qualifying fee for mayor in 2018 at $108.00. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Moving around off. Next order of business, recommendation of police committee to purchase new vehicle from the balance of the general fund vehicle replacement line item, with the balance coming from the seized fund account.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The police committee met on the 19th day of January, and after vigorous discussion and deliberation, this was their recommendation, three zero.
Okay. Motion to purchase new vehicle from the balance of the general fund replacement line item with the balance coming from seized fund.
I make a motion that we approve that measure, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, have motion, have a second?
Second.
Have motion and a second. Have any question? I've got some questions on the... Since we budgeted the two cars.
We did, two cars.
As my understanding, one is already here, and one is due here, motion and a second?
I would have to defer. I did sign a license application for one, but is it physically here?
Yes, it's got here.
It is here?
Yes.
Okay, one is physically here, and one's due to arrive the first of February?
Well, it hasn't been shipped to Georgia yet. They haven't got a car out here on the lot yet. We were hoping it would be in service by February 1st, but I'm not sure, I'm not gonna say for sure it's gonna be in service or not.
Okay, good. We oughta go to, if you want to buy, until we pay for that second, how we know what the balance is? If there's any balance whatsoever in the general fund to add to the... I guess what we're looking at is there not sufficient funding C funds yet?
Yes, sir, there is.
They...
The balance, the two vehicles that have been ordered, one of which is here, the estimated cost of each vehicle is $41,741. That's our best estimate. That would come to $83,482, leaving a balance in the general fund vehicle replacement line item of $6,518. Notwithstanding that, we have a verified balance of $44,244.70 in the seized fund account. So, interpolating, another police car would cost approximately $41,741, or $42,000, you would have enough money in the seized fund account alone to pay for the vehicle.
I guess the only problem I've got with it is that old saying about assuming is what they gonna cost. Opposed realistically, but I don't want to purchase it until we make sure we got the money in there. And I do know, I did notice we just had got a seizure on an interstate, but that hadn't been awarded to us yet, has it?
Which one?
There's two. I clicked out the newspaper for you. There are two, both of them over $2,000, of which 10% will go to the district attorney.
I mean, I know we should have money for attorney. I just don't wanna spend it without having it. But anyway, anybody else got a comment? Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it so ordered. Next order of business is citizens' comments. I believe Mr. Wendell Bryant's first.
Evening, Mayor. I live at 156 Arnold Street here in Grantville. Been here two and a half years. Last week, we lost power on the whole end of Grantville. Well, apparently, the whole city of Grantville lost power, and it took six hours. I called down 111 as soon as they were out. They informed me that Grantville was notified. Two hours later, I called back. They said that Grantville was not allowed to take care of the problem. It was on Georgia Power's thing. We have an issue, I have a problem with this. Why should Georgia Power be involved when you've got city workers that's supposed to be working to take care of this thing at any given hour, night or day? And why should people have to go and lose food and lose power for hours at a time and everything? My power was down six to eight hours last week and everything. And that's, I'm not worried about that. The problem of it is, you shouldn't even have a place where if people call in and say, you know, we're cold, we ain't got no electricity, is there any place in the county or anywhere? Oh, no, I was told we don't. And I think Grantville needs to come up with some solution for these folks, elderly and all, that have, even young folks have babies. If their houses are cold and they ain't got no heat, then they need to be, you know, let the police officers, if they can get out, go out and knock on doors in certain areas and say, hey, we got these, this station opened up such and such street. That's fine and dandy. Don't leave the Grantville folks like myself and my wife. She's home to cook raben from the flu for the third time in two weeks. And this is getting cautiously out of my pocket and getting a little bit ridiculous. So I'm asking, why can't the council vote on getting a place put up for the... Everybody, from the senior citizens to myself, all the way down. If you have power in one part of the county, send us to the other. I mean, if it's, no, no, we can, and people can get there, fine. If they can't, that's fine too. But, you know, it's our priority. But there was no sense in my house being 20 degrees, and I couldn't use my heat, you know? And so, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me that it took Georgia Power and Grantville to the following afternoon to get my lights back on. And I would appreciate that you further investigate this because it's getting to the point of a lot of people are leaving Grantville because of this, and I'm not the only one. There's three people in that trailer park that live with machines, certain ones. What were they supposed to have done? I hope to God none of them died because it would be, to me, it would be left over on the city for having that happen. I mean, I know power goes out, nobody can help it. But when you call down 111, and they say that Grantville is not allowed to touch it, then I ask, well, why? They says, it's Georgia Power's problem. And the people from the city of Grantville ordered Georgia Power out here, not their, not the workers. You see what I'm saying? And it's just alarming. This is not the first time this has happened. So I'm just asking you, consider doing something. I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Marion Cecil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Name is Marion Cecil, 144 Arnold Street. And, you know, we all raise utility rates and taxes because you need the money. I got an idea. We got seven people that are gonna run for mayors from what the word is, and other eight people running for council. Let's raise the fees to $1,440 for council, $2,150 for the mayor. That'll bring in $32,570, just like that. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Next order of business, city council, five minutes.
Well, I didn't really have one until I visited the summer assistance, but, you know, it might be something to consider in the future that we have some sort of emergency shelter. Not necessarily for a six-hour power outage, but something more catastrophic could happen. You might wanna consider getting a gas heater. I mean, I ain't being a smartass. I'm just saying that if in a situation like that, it could help. All right. I appreciate what you're saying, and I... Another thing is the 911 calls, I don't know, this is something I'm getting out of bounds here. I get talking about things I don't know enough about sometime, but I sure wouldn't want the county 911 to shun us down here ever, you know? If there's some calls that need to be referred from 911, you know, in an emergency situation, I ain't talking about reckless driving. I'm talking about situations like this when we have a weather issue, and maybe there was another way to get to hold our police department other than going through the county. That's it?
Okay, thank you. Mr. King?
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. Appreciate seeing you, it's a smiling face, and I'm glad we made some progress. We've been fast progress tonight. I echo Mrs. Hines' opening comments that Mr. Doctor is gonna be missed. He was someone that I've known down here for about five, six years, and considered to be a friend. We're gonna miss the guy. But moving forward, I think we made the right choice with the district seized funds. We're gonna have available to us about $50,000. I have absolutely no concern about not having the money to purchase that vehicle. That's why we've made the recommendation as we did. As for the comment by Wendell there, that we do need some type of emergency planning to be done to handle situations, as we had the other night. In the hot summer nights, people can sweat through that, they can deal with it. But on a cold winter night, we're down around 15, 20 degrees. There has to be something available for people to come to that they can get to just to have a warm place to stay for the night. Perhaps something we need to look at is an emergency generator, say for City Hall. This room can hold probably 50 people. It's something we should look at, where we can devise this, and how we can set it up, and what funds it would take to create it. And I'm sure that with SPOX money that we'll be getting in the future, it's something that we can, we'll be able to afford a generator system that will be able to power a building that we can house people in. But that's a future consideration. Again, thank you for coming, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to say, but I do sympathize with what you said, sir. And I'm more interested in what the others have said. It may be good to look at cities similar in our size to see what they have in place, or if they have anything in place. But I do believe it would be good to have a table talk about solving this situation, looking at ways to solve it, should we ever have to encounter a long time for our citizen to be without the resources that the city offers. So I understand what you're saying, and I do hope that we can have come to the table and talk about it. Just, I'm glad to see the few that we have here tonight, and it's just good to see everybody. Thank you so much.
Mr. King?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I just would like to address the comment as well. I know that, in reading the submitted form, that it said that all the council members were called, and I never received a phone call, not one. Any phone call that I did receive, I was prompt to answer and offer help in any way I could. As a matter of fact, the mayor and I communicated that night. And also, I know that I had spoke to several people about the upcoming storms, and stated that preparation was key. Maybe it's my background in public safety, but the information that was communicated to us from the M.A. direction, we were told to be prepared for this. And I understand to some effect that people can't afford certain preparation and things like that. But one avenue that I might offer is reaching out to civic organizations. It's not the sole responsibility, in my opinion, for the city to bear the brunt of all of this. We should be coming to the table, as Ms. Hines said, and collaborate with churches, organizations that happen to represent our community to help to bear some of this weight. So in saying all that, we learned from past hiccups and mistakes, and I would encourage any time that there is impending weather, to be prepared, have a couple extra gallons of water, have food that would last a couple of days, non-perishable. But preparation is key, and I'll do anything I can to help prepare. I know that I was out, I helped rebuild carburetors on generators, helped with gas in generators, setting generators up and things like that during the course of the weather events. And I'd be glad to do so again, should the need arise. But in saying that, I'm here to help however I can, and look forward to continuing to serve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. King. I'd like to thank the few that are out here, appreciate it. Addressing your remarks about the outage, it wasn't a thing... I don't mean to oversimplify it, but Grantville has no generator. We do not generate any electricity whatsoever. We buy electricity through MEAG, Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia. Now, our electricity, I believe, originates from some power plant in Walmsley or something like that. Then there's one down on the south end towards Thomason somewhere. And it's, and I don't mean to oversimplify it, but yet, it's like they've got the generators. They've got them plugged in and running. And they got extension cords running all the way down through Carrollton, Newton, and what have you. If anybody kicks that plug out, then we're gonna lose power because we don't have it down here to generate. Now, and we can't go up there and mess with their generators or anything else. They have to locate that outage, and that's what happened here. People said on Facebook, well, Calico had electricity, which they did, some part of it, because that power comes from the other transformer. That's why the town is basically black, except from that south end. Now, as far as what you recommend, we have money appropriated in this next SPOX money to restore the old freight depot and restore the auditorium and so forth. Right now, we have nothing, other than the county, like Mr. King suggested, the churches. But they were out of power too, and I don't know what would've happened in that case. But possibly down the road, when we get these historic buildings completed, might be a good use to put a generator so it could be used as an emergency shelter. So it's not that we don't understand and we don't want to do anything, but like 911 told you, it's no sense in them coming out here just because there was nothing they could do until the outage was fixed outside the city. So, like I say, we don't have anything, but good point you brought it up, and maybe we can come up with a solution, and we'll definitely look at it. we can come up with a solution, and we'll definitely look at it. Mr. Cretschmer?
I have nothing. Can I do, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mitch?
Mitch?
Is there any reason to go on closer?
No, sir.
All right. No further business coming forward, council, running town order?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All questions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
You're all adjourned.